That's on if you're gonna use it. It's honestly not smart of people, I thought.
Come on, just scared to gavel my thing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, Clay County Plan and Zoning Meeting. We have a few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear six cases. We will begin with a report from the Plan and Zoning Staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the advocate to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Plan and Zoning Board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on August 17th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in this room. Can we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Yes, Chairman, and I do want to add that case number five on the agenda, or three on the board, has been withdrawn, so that case will not be discussed tonight. That is the shooting range. So I just want to throw that out there, in case anybody came for that case, it will not be heard. Roll call, Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett. Jerry Nolte.
Present.
Mark Beggs. Randall Morris.
Present.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Present.
We would normally call for a motion on our meeting, the minutes from our last meeting, which are not available this month. The minutes of our July 11th meeting will be presented at our regular meeting in September. I think to fast forward our agenda, I think Skip already touched on it. Case number five, the shooting range on Steel House Road, has been continued for this evening and ultimately withdrawn for future discussion.
First case we've been hearing tonight, it's case number August 23, dash 141, RT slash P.
And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add, this staff report is far off official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is the proposed subdivision of Atlas Meadows. Currently, the property sits at roughly eight acres. It's zone agricultural and partly zone limited industrial, or I-1. This property is where the Quality Trust Company, I believe is what it was referred to before, I believe it's still the same, the trust company that's off of 169 there. So it consists of one lot that has access from H&amp;H Lake Road and 169 Highway. This proposal is to split this one eight-acre lot into two lots. One of the lots would roughly be four and a half acres and be rezoned to residential, urban, rural, single-family, or RU-80. That currently meets our standard of zoning for that lot size. This lot also includes an agricultural land preservation and has access from H&amp;H Lake Road. The second lot is roughly three and a half acres, and it is already, again, partially zoned, that limited industrial, or I-1. So pretty much what we're doing there is you can kind of see on this first map here, where, obviously where that zone currently, it just encompasses those two buildings. With this next, when we rezone the rest of it, it's going to encompass the current septic system on it and have a little bit more acreage there. Let's see here, this proposal falls under the Urban Services Tier of the Clay County 2008 Comprehensive Plan, which allows for one unit per 20 acres, or an exception to the 20-acre minimum, being 10-plus acres with agricultural land preservation, or with the exception of 10-plus acres, being that the city within one mile may review and recommend exceptions. In this case, the city of Smithville has made their comments, and those are highlighted in the staff report. And that means that it's granting that exception, so staff believes that this proposal is compliant with the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. This is the surrounding area. There in the yellow is going to be the subject property. The green on your screen is going to be the unincorporated areas. The blue there is all the annexed portions of Smithville. And then there over there in the red would be the Platte County line. Staff received no objection leading up to a plan and zoning meeting. With all of our rezoning cases, we published this case in the newspaper, we posted rezoning sign on site, and sent certified letters with any property within 1,000 feet. In this case, we sent the 49. We received no objections from our agencies, and they have given their approval, although Platte County Water District has indicated that they will not be able to supply water to this property due to not having any water mains in the area. So that gets highlighted in a future case on this agenda, dealing with a well-water request. Staff is recommending approval with one condition, and that deals with changes to recording copies of the plan. Staff would be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do any board members have questions for staff regarding the zoning for the application being heard?
I did have a question on the well water for Lot 1. Who's currently providing the water for the industrial section?
Yeah, so I spoke with the applicant about this one. Currently, how it's set up is there's a cistern on that property that collects the water that's used there, but for drinking water purposes, that is trucked in. This, the well water was approved in June 13th of 1998 for this lot specifically, but from my understanding, that's how they deal with the water.
So there, for the industrial lot, there is a well that could be dug, it's been approved?
Yes.
So fire suppression for a trust company is not a concern?
Well, so with the, reviewing the case from the, from 1998, it specifically addresses that to either the fire, the Smithville Fire Department was wanting to have a dry hydrant or access to that pond to use for, for fire purposes.
So pond is no longer on that lot, though?
Correct.
So what are we doing for fire suppression?
So we're not, they're not adding on to the building. The building was approved in whatever year it was constructed. If they would add on or propose a new building, then we would have to look at that, but...
No, I'm not concerned with the building, I'm just asking fire suppression. The reason the well was approved was for water for that lot. Now we're going to see a proposal for a well for the residential lot that's getting split off, but the pond is going with that. So if Smithville wanted a dry hydrant or access to the pond, the pond's no longer on that lot. So when it's sold, does the fire department still have access to the pond?
Well, so I would answer, I guess I would answer that by saying that we reached out to the Smithville Fire District for comments and did not receive any comments. If you like, we can circle back and try to address that specific issue. We could try to address it before County Commission, or you could delay the case and we come back before this board. But they were, reached out for comments, and we did not receive any comments or objections.
Go. So how close is the nearest main?
So the, for Platte County Water District number eight, the closest main is roughly about a mile. And for the city of Smithville, the closest main is across 169. But the concerns there were the cost of having to bore under 169 to get that main to this property.
Because there is a residential neighborhood directly east, on the east side of 169, from the subject parcel, that you see on the map there. Obviously, it's served with water. And the code says unusual circumstances. Well-water should only be approved by, in unusual circumstances, doesn't define what those unusual circumstances are.
Yeah, I notice, and maybe we're going to talk about this in the next case, but seems like in the past, we've always said that when a main becomes available, they have to tie in. Didn't really see that in the next, or the next case that we're going to talk about, so...
So I don't know if Shane wants to talk about that. I believe the applicant has signed an agreement to do that once it becomes available.
He signed that with the Water District or with the Plan and Zoning?
With Planning and Zoning, correct?
Yeah, it's an agreement with Planning and Zoning, yeah.
Not my place, but probably cheaper and better to bore the highway and get Smithville water than put in a well, but that's my opinion, so... Does staff have any other questions for, I'm sorry, does the board have any questions for staff? All right, thank you, Shane. If the applicant is present, if he could step up to the podium, please? And Kenny, could you state your name and address, please?
Say again, sir.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Kenny Trump, 6174 Southwest Cook Road, Plattsburgh, Missouri.
Okay. And Mr. Trump, do you understand the staff's report regarding the rezoning, and then you understand the conditions that will follow as we move forward? And are you in agreement with these conditions? Okay. All right, do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the case being heard? With none, if, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, if there's no additional discussion with the board, I would call for a motion for the approval of the rezoning of Atlas Meadows. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I think we can roll right into the, a motion regarding the preliminary plat of Atlas Meadows. I do have a question for staff on that, if we could, please? Is, is there, should there not be a ingress egress easement on Lot 2 that's going to allow access to Lot 1?
No, there's, there's, there's frontage on each side, so there's frontage on 169 for the industrial lot.
Oh, I see.
And frontage off the other, on the west side.
H&amp;H Lake, yep, I'm sorry. All right, very good. If there's no further discussion regarding the preliminary plat for Atlas Meadows, I would call for a motion of approval.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, can I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next case that we'll hear tonight is case number August 23-142F. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add, this staff report is far off official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is the final plat for Atlas Meadows. Staff believes that the final plat is compliant with the approved preliminary plat, and that it meets the Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code, and staff is recommending approval with that one condition. Again, staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present.
All right, thank you, Shane. I think this is pretty straightforward. Any of the board members have questions for staff? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Trump, could you step up to the podium, please, and state your name and address?
Kenny Trump, 6174 Southwest Cook Road, Plattsburgh, Missouri.
Okay, we're, we're hearing the final plat of Atlas Meadows, and are, do you understand the staff's report, and are you in agreement with the conditions they've set out?
Yes.
All right, very well. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Kenny.
I thank the board members.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, and with no further discussions, I would call for a motion for the approval of the final plat of Atlas Meadows with the conditions attached, set out in Exhibit A.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next case we'll hear this evening is case number August 23-143GR. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add, this staff report is far off official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is the well-water request that we briefly went over with the preliminary rezoning. Again, this is, this is what the lot looks like currently, with the, with the current zones of ag and limited industrial. The requests, again, allow for well-water for residential use. Section 151-8.9 of the Land Development Code. All proposed development to be connected to enclosed water supply system. The exception to that is granted by the Plan and Zoning Commission and County Commission for only, or only under unusual circumstances. Again, this property was approved back in June, June 13th of 1998. Staff is recommending approval with the one condition, and that condition deals with registering the well with Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioner may have, and the applicant is present.
Did I understand you say that this property was previously approved in 1998 to have a well supply water at that time?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do any board members have questions for staff?
Did they install the well? Is there a well on the property now, currently?
Yeah, again, from my, from my understanding, at least what was explained to me was that the, currently what they use is a cistern for the water on the property, and then drinking water is brought in through trucks. The applicant would be able to shine more light on whether that well is installed, but...
So if they're using a cistern, it must be, not be a hyper-producing well, for like, say, fire suppression? If they're having to pump it into a cistern and then pull from there? And it's not potable, I assume? Because they're bringing in drinking water?
I'm sorry.
Water from the well, it's not potable?
Drinkable. Oh, that, I'm not...
I believe you said earlier that they indicated to staff that the drinking water was, was trucked in.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, thank you, Shane. Any other board members have questions for staff?
I guess my only question is, so there's going to be two wells that are now approved, one for each lot?
Yeah, so there would be the possibility of two wells. So in 98, the entire property, it was, even though part of it was zoned industrial, part of it was zoned ag, they didn't divide the property. So there was one well approved in 98. Now they're wanting to do the residential portion on the western side. Tonight's request is to allow the residential portion to be served by a well.
The assumption that the original well remains with Lot 1?
Yeah, for the industrial lot, if they choose to use it.
And as we said previously, there is an agreement for the owner to tie into a closed cell, a closed system, once it becomes available.
When it becomes available.
And so we're going to tie that to building permits? How are we going to enforce that?
Well, that's a good question. Because that, that has not been done with every well request in the past.
Well, we should have, if we have an agreement, we should have some teeth so that we can enforce it.
Yeah, I'd have to...
It doesn't do any good to have one that...
I'd have to research that to give you a definite answer.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Shane. Mr. Trump, can you step up to the microphone, please? State your name and address.
Kenny Trump, 6174 Southwest Cook Road, Smith, Plattsburgh, Missouri.
Okay, and I think you, you understand we're hearing the, using a water well for your water supply. Do you understand the staff's report? Do you agree with the conditions that they're attaching to the report?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant?
Well, I think we asked earlier, is there a current well on the property?
Excuse me?
Is there a current well on the property?
No, sir, there isn't. We're working to get that done. We have, we've been contacting a couple of drillers, and they won't contact us back. So we're, we're pushing to get that done.
So there's no, there's, there's presently no...
There's presently no lot?
For, for just one lot, Lot 1.
Lot 1, where the shop is?
The residential lot. I think it's Lot 1, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, Lot 2 is the, is the business.
Okay. And you're not trying to get a well there?
All right, any, any other questions for board for applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you all for what you're doing and your help.
Yep. Is there any, anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, and with no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the single, the water well for Lot number 1 on Atlas Meadows with the conditions attached in Exhibit A.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one other question for staff. So if they can't get a well, are you going to issue a building permit for that residential portion if they don't have water?
No, and we've had a situation like that in the past in this area, where they drilled a well, it wasn't a good well, they had to annex into Smithville and get the water line there, and their permit at that point was issued through Smithville. So I would, I would picture the same thing happening here. If it's not a good well, they're going to have to go other routes, bore, bore under 169, or find a way to get water there to be able to get a building permit.
Okay, okay.
All right, there again, I would call for a motion to approve the water well for Lot 1 of Atlas Meadows.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number July 23-138CUP. And could we have a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman, so staff's not going to give a report, so if you remember, last month, the Planning and Zoning Board heard testimony from the applicant, the members of the public in favor and opposition, and it was decided that the record would be closed on July 21st. So staff accepted any additional information up to that point. There was also information, if you remember, handed out at the meeting. And the additional information that staff received was a two-page letter from the applicant that was posted on the website, and then a two-page letter from opposition, and then a video that was also posted on the website. So that was the additional information, but the commission decided not to take any additional comments from the applicant or the members of the public at this meeting. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that, that you have.
All right. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? Very well, I think we might need a little help, that for the record, we're going to close any additional discussion until we have a motion and a second on the floor, is that correct? Andy?
Correct. You call for your motion, assuming there's a motion and a second, then the board members can discuss amongst each other and with staff, and make any comments they believe, you know, necessary and relevant to consider the case. And then at the close of all that discussion, then the vote would be taken.
Okay, then it remains the same, that the discussion is not open to the public participation nor the applicant? So... With that being said, I would call for a motion to approve the...
Chairman, just ask for a motion on... Chairman, just ask for a motion on the application, and then the movement can choose how to word it.
Pardon me?
Just ask for a motion on the application, and the person making the motion can word their motion.
All right, very well. I would call for a motion on the application or the case that's presently being heard.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a few comments that I'd like to make. I spent two days last week thoroughly examining all the documentation that was submitted by the applicant for this case that was presented at the July 11th Planning and Zoning Meeting. The applicant has failed to submit adequate evidence that the proposed cell tower will not have a negative impact on property values of adjacent properties. The burden of proof is the responsibility of the applicant, and this has not been fulfilled. The Clay County Land Development Code, Chapter 151-3.10, Regarding Conditional Use Permits, Paragraph A, Point 13, Point C, Approval Criteria for Conditional Use Permits. And I quote, "The proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the area." Therefore, my recommendation for this conditional use permit application is to be denied. So we've got a motion on the floor, a second on the floor, and comments justifying the vote the way it is, and I would call for a roll call vote.
Do you want to make sure there's no other comments from commissioners?
The rest of the commissioners need an opportunity to ask questions of staff and comment.
I'll open back up for discussion that any of the board members may have or would like to add to the case being heard.
I'll just go on the record saying I agree with your assessment of the applicant's information.
All right, yep.
I agree with the commissioner as well.
My opinion is the applicant didn't do enough due diligence on the surrounding area of
Okay. There's no, with no further discussion, I would call for a roll call vote for the denial of the AT&amp;T cell tower on 140th Street.
And just to be clear, the motion is, and the second are to deny, a yes vote would be to support the denial, a no vote would be not to support the denial. Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is Case Number June 23-136A. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. We'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the case last month that, with the length of the meeting that we just kind of punted to this month, we did discuss it, I believe, in June. So I just kind of want to revisit this, give you a summary again, and then try to answer any questions. I will fully admit their staff still has some work to do on this. So our request is that you continue it to next month with the hope that we can finalize this next month if the board feels it's ready to move forward. So again, to give you the background, since the county has gone to a charter form of government, planning and zoning is falling under different state statutes. So we're trying to align our land development code to those state statutes, which allows us to create some different procedures. And I'll go over those procedures here in a minute. We're also using this as a cleanup, just to some minor stuff that we feel needs to change in these sections of code as well. This is by far the biggest amendment I think that we've ever done to the land development code, other than just redoing the whole thing. So to give you a little bit of details, the state statutes allow for the county commission to approve an enforcement officer. And that enforcement officer has a little more judgment to approve certain types of cases if the county chooses to. So right now, with the current land development code, all the planning and zoning cases mainly fall in under two processes, a minor subdivision and a major subdivision. But whether it's minor or major, it follows the same process where it comes to Planning and Zoning Commission and goes to County Commission. The difference is, a major subdivision goes through that process twice because it has infrastructure where we have to review construction plans, so there's extra steps there. What we're trying to accomplish is streamlining some of these smaller cases where it makes it easier on the citizens, still allows public comment, but doesn't take four months to get through the process. So the proposed amendment would create an administrative process for smaller developments, and that process could be approved by staff or that enforcement officer. So currently, the way we have it written, this would have to be a plat that only includes two or less lots. So we're talking somebody subdividing 10 acres for their child to build a house on their property. It would also have to meet all of the land development code requirements and all the comp plan guidance. If it didn't adhere to those, then it would have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. So instead of that coming to Planning and Zoning and County Commission, it would be reviewed by staff, made sure that it met those requirements, we would still notify neighbors, there'd be a waiting period, we'd give the neighbors a chance to make comments still. But I would see that process probably taking a month and a half rather than three or four months. There would be an appeal process, and I'm going to talk about that even with cases that go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would see this as an appeal where both the applicant, if they're denied, and/or the opposition, if there is opposition, if there's so much opposition to the case that it could be appealed either to the Planning and Zoning Commission or County Commission. Then the next one, and if you have questions, if you have questions about that process, feel free to interrupt me. The next one would be the minor subdivision. Now, currently, the way we have it written, this is anything that doesn't include infrastructure. So it could be three lots, it could be eight lots. But again, these would have to be projects that meet all the land development code requirements, all the comp plan guidance. This process would come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so staff would review it, it would come here, there'd be a public meeting, but Planning and Zoning would have the option of approving it or sending it along to County Commission. So it could possibly cut out that second step of going to County Commission. However, again, the applicant, if Planning and Zoning Commission changed the conditions or denied it, would have the option to appeal that to County Commission. So it's not just Planning and Zoning Commission denies it and it goes away. Again, the way I'm seeing the appeal from the neighbors is like through a protest petition where they get 30% of the neighbors that are within that 1,000-foot that we notify by letter. If they are able to get that percentage together, even if Planning and Zoning Commission approves it, they could appeal it after that decision, which would then kick it to County Commission. So there's always a failsafe to go to that next level. And then with our current cases, if somebody appeals a County Commission decision, that goes to Circuit Court, and that wouldn't change. So it still kind of follows that same process, but there's chances for it to be a shorter process. Then the last one would be the major subdivision, and it would follow the basic route that we go now with the one possible change of staff reviews it, Planning and Zoning reviews it, County Commission reviews it, and if it gets approved by County Commission, then it has to come back a second time. And I want input from the board on this, this one especially, is rather than make this go back to Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission a complete second time, if both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission feel it meets, there's been no changes from that approved preliminary plat, there are jurisdictions that allow either staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve that final plat, which cuts out a step or two for the applicant. So that's what we're trying to create. Now, there's still some questions I have, and I need to meet with County Council and go hash everything out and go over the details, but that's what we're trying to create. So some additional information, like if we have, the example I think I gave last, or a couple of months ago, was Carolyn's Pumpkin Patch. If they're renewing their conditional use permit and they have no violations or code violations, we would like to create a process where staff can approve that rather than go on to Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission. Now, if they're making major changes as determined by staff, then there would be a public process to follow. This amendment would also change the BZA to three county commissioners, which we've already done, but that's following the new statutes that we're following. And then there's some minor changes, like, well, to me, this is a major change, but changing from certified mail to regular mail because nobody signs for their certified mail, and it's a burden on the applicant because it's $8.10 per letter we have to send out. It would also change the public notice to the website rather than a newspaper. That, again, is a burden on the applicant. I've had one person in my nine years tell me they've seen a case in the newspaper, so I think more people will see it on the website. So there's some changes like that that go along with this. But I really would like, we want to answer any questions that you have. Again, our recommendation is to continue this next month, but I'd really like the commissioner's input on these three processes, and if you agree with that, or how you see those processes going. And we would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I'd like to comment, Kip. I've pretty well read through your recommendations, and I think you're right on to streamline the process and expedite the process for the applicants in cases that are in full compliance with the LDC and not, some of them wouldn't have to come before P and Z, and a lot of them would not have to come before the commission, and I think it's a good thing. So I've visited with Shane a little bit, I think we've talked about, there's a little bit of verbiage, there's some run-on sentences in your proposed amendments, but those aren't big deals. I think if we sign off on this in the next 30, 60 days, and we get into it and things aren't working quite like you wanted, I'd like to think we could always make changes as we go.
Yeah, and I would expect with, you know, I'm looking at this document, there's 63 pages, and we're probably going to add to it. I would expect we will have, we will come back to you with some revisions after we see how this works. And then also keep in mind, we're just starting the kickoff of the comprehensive plan, so we're going to have to amend the land development code to align with the comprehensive plan as well. So there's always that opportunity to come back when we do that as well.
Right, do any board members have questions for staff?
So I've got a question. When the staff is reviewing, say, minor subdivisions, how does that process work where the opposition and the applicant, is it a two-way, how does that, how does that work? Or how do you envision that working? So that everybody's in the loop communication-wise?
So you're talking about the administrative process where there's no public meeting?
Right, yeah.
So initially, the way I thought, you know, I think the neighbors should still know that something is happening if they're within 1,000 feet. So we send that letter, ask them to contact Planning and Zoning, and if they want to come to the office and visit about the project, staff would provide information, go over the requirements, and answer any questions, which still, to me, gives them a voice, just it's not in a public setting.
So you'll kind of be the funnel between applicant and opposition, or however that communication needs to flow?
Yes. Now, if, you know, from a staff's perspective, if it meets, like the chairman said, if it meets the LDC and the comp plan, if a neighbor's complaining about the location of an easement or something like that, if it's not code-based, you know, I don't think we're going to get into a go-between between the applicant and the neighboring property owner. To me, our job is to make sure that it meets the requirements that are approved by, you know, County Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thanks.
So you get that much opposition, that's when it's going to come before P and Z? And if we can't settle it, then it's going to go on to County Commission?
Yeah, I still, I envision it still being an appeal process if they get, the way I have it written now, and it's not in your document, I actually did it today, but the way I have it written in the updated document is 30% of that 1,000-foot adjoining list, if they appeal it, then it could come to Planning, or it would come to Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm always looking for, I don't want it just to be dead-end with, okay, the enforcement officer is the end-all, be-all, they make the decision. I would like there to be an appeal process, but I don't think it can just be one neighbor appealing it.
Absolutely. Do any other board members have questions for staff?
Sir? I have more of a comment, and that is, I think that, you know, what I'm seeing here looks like it is very much in the spirit of what the County Commission would be looking to see happen. So I think we're really working in the same direction here, and there's been an appetite for the current County Commission to streamline a lot of our processes, and this seems like one of the ones that certainly they have, let's say, my fellow commissioners have a lot of interest in doing. So what I really like about this process is the measured and thoughtful way in which this is being currently put together, and as we go forward, putting more thought into it, I think, once it comes to the commission, it's going to be refined in such a way that I don't foresee any major problems when it comes to the commission. So I just want to say I appreciate this board taking up this issue and doing some of the heavy lifting when it comes to making sure that it is streamlined but still fair, and that there's still opportunity for citizens to express opposition or to appeal. Thank you.
Well, when we need some big guns, we'll still call on the County Commission, so...
And I will say that there's a lot here, so you can reach out to me, ask questions in between now and the next meeting, but my goal is to have a more finalized document in front of you next month, most likely with revisions to the Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws as well, because some of this goes hand in hand, so we probably will put those two together.
Any other questions for staff on the board? I was wanting to have a quick meeting, Kip, but you pretty well ruined that, so took up half the meeting.
Hey, it's only, that's only, it's only been 45 minutes. After four and a half hours last time, it's pretty good.
If there's no...
Mr. Chairman, before you move on from this case, there's still some members of the audience, if you want to see if any of them are here, to speak on this application.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's correct.
And then we can wrap up.
Yep. With no additional discussion with the board members and staff, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard?
Question?
Yes, if you'd step up to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
My name's Ken Bowen, 23407 Northeast 100th Street, Liberty, Missouri. I came for the sheriff's application, but I did read the proposal that's currently being considered. One of the concerns I have, based upon my last experience, was the 1,000-foot requirement in some instances may not be adequate. When you're talking about large tracts of land, 1,000 feet doesn't quite hit very many people. And so I appreciate the fact that a lot of the matters that come before here aren't quite as contentious as the, a couple of the things that you heard last meeting. But one of the concerns I had was just not enough notice, and... But one of the concerns I had was just not enough notice, and so, 1,000 feet, maybe there's another way to consider stretching that a little bit, particularly if you've got the large acreages. The other thing I might ask for consideration is moving the notification period for adjoining landowners up a bit to give them a little more time to react. I understand that maybe there isn't a lot of opposition perhaps, but personally, having to find out through notice in the newspaper, I didn't have enough time, I felt, to appropriately understand some of the proposal and to provide a cohesive argument to you all. So, you know, the 1,000-yard thing, maybe move up the time of notice, and the other thing, that the public, the public, what is it, the poster board or whatever, maybe go up a little bit earlier in the process. You know, that's a very handy thing, except when you're talking about Steel House Road and nobody goes down Steel House Road. Yeah, need to give the neighbors and others enough time to consider or see what might be going on with property. Those are the only things I would say, based on my experience and my brief reading of the proposal. I appreciate your time, I really appreciate your time for the last meeting, because it was torturous in many ways, and, but I do appreciate the attendingness you provided to all of us who spoke, and I know all of us felt that we had an opportunity to state our case and present our opinions, and we certainly, all of us, have talked about the appreciation we had for this body's patience with us, so thank you.
Thank you. I think you have a couple of very valid points about the 1,000-foot and the timely notice, and the P and Z, we are in the process of updating the land development code and our comprehensive plan, and it'd be a good time to address potential changes in those two items, so thank you for that. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the case being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for adjournment of the meeting, Mr. Staff?
Yeah, so can we just, I need a motion and a second to continue to next month's meeting for the LDC, just to make it official?
Yep.
Please?
Yep.
See, you're getting ahead of yourself, you just want to end the meeting, Tom.
I'm sorry. Call for a motion to continue the case number June 23-136A, which is the amendments to the 2011 Land Development Code. If motion to continue to our next meeting.
Motion continue.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, can we roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries. And can I make a couple of comments before?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted on the record, again, that the shooting range CUP was withdrawn, it will not be heard, it would, they would have to reapply, and we would go through the same process if they would reapply. And then the other cases from last month, the Spry Acres was approved by County Commission, and the exotic Dangerous Wild Animal case is still waiting to go to County Commission.
Anything else for staff or the members? All right. Meeting adjourned.